Good evening, and thank you for being at the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education regular meeting. This meeting is livestreamed on the Oshkosh Media YouTube channel. It can be found at www.youtube.com/c/oshkoshmedia. Are we in compliance with the open meeting law notification?
Yes, we are.
All right, thank you. Please call the roll.
Carnes.
Here.
Pejel.
Here.
Solaji.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
Wyman.
Here.
Carolyn.
Herzog.
Here.
We have a forum.
Wonderful, thank you. I would like to, for everyone, I would like everyone to stand and then I'd like to invite Colin Payne and Jordi Pacula up here to the table. They are two elementary students at Jefferson Elementary School, and they're going to lead us today in the pledge of allegiance. So gentlemen, whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jordi, thank you. And Colin, thank you. Do you guys want to say any words? Or do you guys agree? Thank you, take care. Have a great day.
Thank you, guys.
How much?
All right, so next up, we have a kind of a new addition to our regular meeting, and it's in the form of a land acknowledgement. And in, for the purpose of this being the first meeting where we do this, I'm going to let Dr. Davis kind of explain the land acknowledgement, the premise for it, and to read it.
Yeah, so I appreciate that. So the land acknowledgement is something that I've seen in different venues across Oshkosh, and it's really just an opportunity to reflect on our history as a community and be able to bank that right into our protocol, similar to the pledge. And so worked with some of our staff to be able to make sure that we honor that history appropriately, and offer this as an opportunity for us to, again, take time at each one of our board meetings and just reflect on the words and some of the histories. So the idea is to be able to read the land acknowledgement at each meeting as stated. So as we gather today, we would like to acknowledge that in Oshkosh, we are an ancestral homeland of the whole chunk and many people who have lived along the western shores of Lake Winnebago, Wisconsin's largest freshwater lake entirely within its borders. We acknowledge that these indigenous communities who have stewarded this land throughout generations and pay respect to their elders, past and present, we welcome the duty and opportunity to share stewardship of these lands. So just wanted to be able to share that with our board and the community as we move forward as a way to just reflect on where we are in our time and what our responsibilities are moving forward.
Great, thank you. Next up, we have, this is a unique meeting in the sense that we have a public hearing that takes place before our regular meetings. So we're going to need to call the public hearing to order. So I would like Ms. Eileen to call the order of the school board, please.
Pejel.
Here.
Solaji.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
Wyman.
Here.
Herzog.
Here.
Carnes.
Here.
We have a forum.
All right, thank you. I'm going to read a budget, a public budget hearing notice. A public hearing will be held today on Wednesday, September 14th, 2022, at 6:00 PM in the boardroom of the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education Administrative Office, located at 215 East Eagle Street in Oshkosh, Wisconsin. A detailed copy of the budget is available at the OSAD Administration Office or by contacting Drew Nihans at 920-424-0122. A summary of the budget is printed on the sheet that we have, that's on, that's being displayed. So, all right, next up, we have a presentation of the 2022-23 budget. Dr. Davis and Mr. Nihans.
Yes, so I'll call Drew Nihans to be able to walk through our annual budget for the school year for the 2022-23 school year. So Drew.
Yeah, good evening. So we are going to go over the budget for the year. So just to kind of go over what the budget calendar looks like, we typically start our budget process in November. So November of last year is when we started digging into this year's budget that we're going to pass tonight. And as you can see, we have different landmarks that happen throughout the year. We have to do ours in September to short-term borrow. So that's kind of the timing of why we do it. Some of the key factors that are impacting our 2022-23 budget, the revenue, the state legislature did not provide any increase in their per pupil limit, so our revenues from the state are limited as that far, as far as that goes. We still do have ESER funds that are part of the budget. And then remember that in the spring, we passed a CPI increase for wages at 4.7%. That is being largely offset by the fact that we have a 0% renewal in our health plan. Typically, historically, we've seen a minimum of a 7% renewal, so we're largely using that savings from the health plan to fund that CPI increase for the staff. So then, the budget itself, and this is kind of high level of all the funds, so just to point out what we're looking at, you'll see that the local sources and our revenues on the top in the general fund. So one of the things you want to notice here is the local taxes are, have come down by 6.5 million. In our state sources, the Source 600, that's up for 4 million. So as we spend more money, we get more money back from the state. So the state is funding more of our budget than they did prior years, which is what we would like. There is a $3 million difference from the middle column, the unaudited column, to the budget column, which is on the far right. That largely is due to some of the ESER money reductions, but also our expenditures, that's largely a transfer from Fund 10 to Fund 46, which happens at the end of the year, typically not budgeted in. That happens when we get to the actuals. One thing to notice when you get down by the debt services, this amount, we budgeted 14 million in revenues, and the expenditures is just under 14 million, it's 13, 13.8. That number is going to look different when we set our tax levy. One of the reasons for that is we're using these funds, the debt service levy, to manage our mill rate, so we have a greater capacity down in the future to do Phases 2 and Phases 3 and have less tax impact at that time. So the budget is what we actually are showing on our debt schedules. When we talk at the tax levy and the tax levy time in October, we're going to set that based on our mill rate capacity. So it is going to look a little bit different.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
Where, where in this budget does it show how much money goes to the voucher schools? Or the vouchers that support students in private schools?
That is primarily so, in these, it would be, if you look up in the Fund 10, the general fund, the non-program transactions, the function for 400,000.
Okay.
That's in there. Where that has a little bit more, gets highlighted a little bit more is when we set the tax levy in the end of October. That's probably a little bit easier time to have that discussion and call that out a little bit more. It gets, it does get lost a little bit when we look at it in the budget.
Okay.
In this point.
I just, I was just wondering where it was reflected.
Yeah, and we do know that that last year, I think that was over $4 million.
Correct.
That was routed to voucher.
Correct, there's a little bit more than 4 million. Right now, that's what we're kind of budgeting as a year mark, but that doesn't get set for us until the state, the state tells us that October 15th, what that actual number is for the students. We have no idea at this point. So October 15th is when that truly will come. So when we set the levy at the end of them, October, we'll be able to call that out more specifically.
Thank you very much.
Capital projects, the capital projects, this is something that is a very large amount and something we, it kind of comes and goes when we have referendum projects. So you'll notice we've got expenditures this year that look like we're increasing significantly. We're anticipating about a $44 million spend within Vell Phillips and the new elementary school for construction. We do have right around 2.2 million allocated in Fund 46 as well for a turf football field over at West, included in that. Food service, you'll notice that the expenditures and the revenues are significantly lower than they were in last year. Again, last year is numbers that are actual activity numbers for the year. We do not, we, the federal government doesn't have the summer food program anymore. That stopped at the end of June with the school year, so now we're back to most schools either on the CEP program or the net, the normal national school lunch program. So we do expect a little bit less revenue from, and expenditures as well, going back to the normal food program. Community service is trending how it has in the past several years, as is the package parts of it. So just another kind of recap and where we're going, you can see largely the differences due to the referendum when we look at all the funds. The general fund is just about 60% of our total budget, when you look at everything So where's the money come from? Again, when you're, when we're looking at Fund 10, primarily, the money's coming from the state. 60% of our money from our general fund comes from the state. 31% of the money comes from local taxes. So we're in a, as far as the share of who's sharing on our school general budget, that's a pretty good ratio. Where does the money go from the general fund? You can see that the majority of our money does go to salary and benefits. So one thing to remember when we're looking at the percentages on this, it would be 67% of Fund 10 budget goes to salaries and benefits, but the other financing objects, when you look towards the top, that 16.7 million, that's all fund transfer to special. You pull that out, and we just have Fund 10. Where's the money? Fund 27, the money is basically personnel.
Don't we get, for special education, if I'm correct, is in the reimbursement rate, like 27.8%?
Yeah.
In that area?
Last year is 20, 27.8%. This fiscal year, we're going to get 30%.
And that's an area that would help our school district if we, you know, as a state, better funded special education services.
Correct.
You know, because we, we fund our, the state, we fund our special education service at 27.8 or whatever percent from the state level, so that, you know, the district makes up for most of that funding, correct?
Correct. So if the state increased that aid, that we get, the reimbursement aid on Fund 27, that allows us to capture that money that would have gone from Fund 10 to Fund 27, we don't have to make that transfer. So then we'd be able to allocate that for all students within the budget.
If that made a, if special education was made a priority to be funded in the state budget, safe to say that would benefit us and our special education students and all of our programming, right?
Correct. It would benefit us and every district in the state.
And every student in the whole district.
And I was going to ask also about the special education funding chart. The, so we move 58% of our general budget to special education, and if I understand it correctly, we do that because all this spending, the whole pie of special education 100% is mandated by either the state or the federal government, correct?
Correct.
That we spend it this way, it's just not funded properly by them, so we make up the difference?
Correct.
Am I saying that accurately?
Yeah. Fund 27 is legally mandated that we have to zero that balance out, so unless the state or the federal government combined paid for all of the costs, then the only avenue districts have is Fund 10 to transfer that over to make it whole, because Fund 27's never, the intent is never to actually profit. We wouldn't have that ability.
Yeah.
But, so you're always going to run it in a negative.
Okay.
And that's decreased, that's been a deliberate legislative choice. That's decreased over time. It wasn't always at 27%.
Correct.
Historically, it's been more than that. So that's, that's been an area that's been a choice to get down to this point and can be a choice moving forward.
So food service, again, kind of hit on the revenue, where the revenue is going to change. On the expenditure side, we're expecting our food expenses to also drop. We're not going to be seeing quite the same activity that we had in the past. So even though food prices and costs have gone up, we're not going to need necessarily the quantities that we saw last year. So there is going to be a expected decrease there. We still are looking at pretty close to a break even with food service, and actually with food service, we saw a fairly significant surplus last year, so being able to spend some of that surplus down and having a deficit is probably a good thing for the next year or two. Fund 80, our rec department, is going to hold fairly steady. Some of their expenditures are going to go down a little bit. The last two years, they've been paying fairly good portions of the tennis court and a turf football field and lights going in. So this year, we've been able to back away some of those expenditures. And then on the bottom, you can see the proposed tax levy. Again, that tax levy is going to change as we get closer to the October 15th, when the state certifies, and then when we meet at the end of the month to set the tax levy. Are there any questions?
I do. Two questions. One, the potential turf field at West, that is a separate vote, that's not part of the budget approval process tonight, is that right?
For the contractor?
Yeah. Or for approving?
We haven't, we haven't set the contractor on that.
Okay.
But it is, the project is underway as far as the planning of it and everything. Again, it is budgeted. We've got 2.2 million budgeted in Fund 46, our capital improvement fund.
Sure.
As the avenue to pay for that.
I'm just saying, from a proper process, we vote on approving for that, correct?
Yeah. There'll be a contract.
You'll approve the contract when it goes out to bid, when we get to that point. We're still working through the city process of making sure we have everything to be able to go to bid. But when it, when the project does get bid, yes, the board will approve that.
Okay. And then you said 70%, or 77% of the budget, was that from Fund 10, went towards salaries and wages?
Correct.
What's, what's a normal amount? What's a good amount for us to be shooting for?
The typical that you hear, kind of, the benchmark is 80%.
Okay.
In public schools, is typically what you hear as a general number.
Okay.
So we do spend more than our peers on the average for instruction, when you break it down by the function level. We do spend a little bit higher percentage than they do in direct instruction.
I don't have a question, but I just wanted to highlight the slide actually that you're on, the Fund 80, the community service fund. I think to a lot of people, it's a little complicated to understand how a recreation department is also part of the school district, but that last, the last section of that paragraph talks about how it's really a cost-effective way to run the program, because the district owns the facilities that the recreation department can use, and then also it benefits all the students in the school district boundary instead of just the city boundary. And as a parent of now five students that are part of the larger school district boundary, I just, I'm really grateful for that. I've seen this, how those affordable programs really do help the whole community. I just wanted to highlight that.
So even though you all may not have any questions anymore at this time, there will be another opportunity in the meeting, where we do a workshop on the budget to ask more questions. So with that, I'm going to call the presentation to close. Thank you, Mr. Nihans. And do we know, Mr. Nihans, can you see if there's anyone that's signed up for the public hearing? To speak? And if you want to just actually grab all of those signups, that would be great. No one for the hearing? All right. So typically, what we do when no one is signed up to provide any comments during the opportunity to provide public comments, especially in this hearing, we forego the reading of the guidelines for that. And so I'm going to forego those guidelines for the budget hearing, and I'm going to call, I'm going to look for a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
I second.
I'll second.
Moved by Herzog, seconded by Wright. Please call the roll.
Solaji.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Wyman. Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Carnes.
Aye.
Pejel.
Aye.
We adjourn.
Thank you. All right, next, we move back into our regular meeting for the, for the school board, and has that meeting been, is that meeting in compliance with open meeting law notification?
Yes, it is.
All right, thank you. Please call the roll.
Wright.
Here.
Wyman.
Here.
Herzog.
Here.
Carnes.
Here.
Pejel.
Here.
Solaji.
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you. All right, next, we have the approval of the agenda. Is there any elements of the agenda that a board member would like to move in the current, in the current format of the, of the agenda?
I guess.
Go ahead.
We have one person signed up for the non-agenda public forum, is that correct?
Correct.
Nothing for a regular agenda?
Nothing.
So I would make a motion to move that up before we get into board administrative reports, so the group that are here can speak and not have to sit through everything that we get through, so.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor?
Second.
All right, so a motion by Carnes, seconded by Solaji, to move non-agenda-related public forum above board administrator reports. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Wyman.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Carnes.
Aye.
Pejel.
Aye.
Solaji.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, we have now modified the agenda. Is there any other changes that anyone wishes to make to the agenda at this point? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Carnes, seconded by Wright. Please call the roll.
Herzog.
Aye.
Carnes.
Aye.
Pejel.
Aye.
Solaji.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Wyman. Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. So we are at the point where we invite the public to come up and provide us some statements as it relates to non-agenda-related public forum. Give me a second here. So just to kind of give you some guidelines, so when you, when you come up to provide your statement, please clearly state and name and address and the topic that you wish to address. If you're acting as a spokesperson for a particular group of individuals, please indicate the group that you represent. Please clearly state clearly and concisely your matters of concern, and please limit your comments to three minutes. And please remember that the use of specific names or district personnel may lead to legal liability. In such cases, please pursue the district's formal complaint process by contacting the superintendent's office at 920-424-0160, to be directed to the proper administrator. So next up, we have Ms. Jennifer Peterson, and I believe some additional guests. So all of you can come right up to the table if you wish. Bring your chairs up, and please feel comfortable to indicate who all of you are and who you represent, and proceed.
All right. My name is Jennifer Peterson. I reside at 832 West 20th Avenue, apartment 2 in Oshkosh. We are here tonight representing the Oshkosh Girl Scout Troop 2414, and they're here to present their Silver Award project to the school. They're a little nervous, so.
All right.
Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Nyka.
Yeah.
Hello, my name is Nyka. These are my friends Jenna and Elena. We are from Troop 2414. Did you know that one in 20 children in the U.S. have the alcohol spectrum disorder? I'm one of those kids. FASD affects the way kids learn, the way kids behave, eyesight, hearing, balance, and many other things. Kids with FASD can feel, often feel left out of things because they have delays that other kids may not understand. It is hard to look at someone and know if they have FASD. We see that other things such as Down Syndrome, heart disease, and autism have days dedicated to awareness in the schools. And we'd love to see FASD Awareness Day added to the calendar for middle school and high school students. It is important to educate teens, adults, on the cause of FASD. We can change the numbers of kids born with it. It's also important kids learn why their peers with FASD may act much different than them so that they can be good friends. Please add FAS, please add September 9th to the school calendar as FASD Awareness Day and allow us to share information at the school.
Hello, my name is Elena Peterson, and I am in 8th grade at Carl Trager Middle School. For our Silver Award project, we would like for the Oshkosh School Board to add Fetal Alcohol Spectrum Disorder Awareness Day to the middle and high school calendar. In our plan, we will In our plan, we will create a bookmark with a QR code that'll take you to a website that includes information about FASD and how to be inclusive to our classmates with this disorder and any other disordered ability that makes them different. The website we will make for our project is sustainable because it will have a PDF file that has a bookmark to reprint in future years. We are also going to be presenting the Awareness Day to the County Executive to make the Awareness Day on the county level. We will also set up a booth at the Oshkosh Farmer's Market to pass out our bookmarks to educate the community on FASD and the September ninth FASD Awareness Day.
Hi. Hi, my name is Jenna Williams, and I'm in eighth grade at Tipler Middle School. The reason why we believe there should be more awareness on FASD is to help students learn more about how it affects children so they can be more supportive of classmates and know what None for Nine is and that the only safe amount of alcohol for pregnant women. People with FASD have memory and processing challenges, motor control, auditory, visual, and sensory processing issues. It is important to realize that their world is very different from ours. You cannot outgrow FASD, so if we create awareness in schools, there will be life lessons to carry on forever. We want to stop the stigma, stop the invisibility, and pay attention to people and prevention. That's why we wear red shoes to show our support for FASD, because we want to step up when we step out. And we hope that moving forward, everyone in the district will hear, will wear red on nine-nine to show their support for FASD and the None for Nine cause. Thank you.
You guys did a great job.
Does anybody have any questions?
I was going to offer you all the ability to ask questions if you wish.
We can't discuss this because we're not properly noticed on the agenda. I'm sorry.
But what I would like to encourage one of you to do is to reach out to Dr. Davis so that you can work with Dr. Davis to calendar Fetal Alcohol Spectrum Disorder in the month of September in the next year. So thank you for your presentation. We appreciate the work that you've all done to make this happen. And we also understand how challenging it can be to come talk to someone in the public as well, and you all did a great job. So thank you for being here today, and thank you for your advocacy.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
And I would say that if any of you have questions, we can also get you connected with the troop as well to have your questions answered.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So that brings us back to board administrative reports. And I have a small, brief report, very brief, in the sense that I want to introduce our student board representatives that we have here. I know that many of you introduced yourselves prior to the meeting, but now we get to introduce you to the public as well. So I am happy to introduce Owen Scholzey, senior at Oshkosh North, will be the student board representative. And Tessa Whitcomb, senior at Oshkosh West High School, will be the student board representative for the 2022-2023 year. So thank you both for being here. We are excited for your presence and we're excited for your interaction and definitely excited for your presentations as well. So, thank you. Do you want to lead them into that?
Sure, so we'll jump right into the presentations. So we'll start with, Oshkosh West is on the screen, so Tessa, why don't we start with you?
Yeah, of course. So I just want to say thank you, guys. I think I'm very excited to be here tonight, and I think it's going to be a really good opportunity to represent my school. So what is up with the Wildcats? I thought I'd start by going over some of the things that happened over the summer. So our amazing forensics team competed at the Grand National Forensics Tournament in Washington, D.C. And they also competed in the National Speech and Debate Tournament in Louisville, and I recall that they placed pretty well. And then our softball and track teams also competed at the state. We had two abroad trips this summer. So we had the England trip, which I got the privilege to be on. It was an amazing trip. And we also had some students go to Switzerland and Italy, which also looked like a very neat opportunity. We had some new improvements to our school, so we got these signs in the hallways that let us know what wing we're in, what subject is in that wing, and then where certain classrooms are. So that's definitely helped out a lot of our new students as well as myself. Our building is big and confusing, so you and I still get lost sometimes. And then we also got some new TV screens that went up in our front entrances and our cafeterias, and that allows us to have announcements running all day. We welcomed our new students this year at open house. We had all of our clubs and sports set up to reach new students. And then our new West is Best group works to bring excellent students together. And they ran a welcome presentation as well as a spot. And this year, they're working to make our school better. Our fall sports have gotten off to a good start. Both the athletes and the fans are having a lot of fun. Notably, our boys soccer team and our girls tennis team have been doing very well. And we have a new website this year. That's OWSH Wildcats dot com, which you can check out for pictures, schedules, and then scores. And our fall one-act play auditions are starting this week. This year's performance is going to be of tracks, and there will be public performances on the November eleventh and the twelfth. And then finally, the student council is working really hard to plan out homecoming. Our theme this year is glow in the dark and neon, and that week is going to be September twenty-sixth through September thirtieth. And starting on Friday of that week, we have our parade, which will be at five o'clock, the tailgate at six o'clock, and then our football game against Appleton North at seven o'clock. And Saturday, our dance for students is at eight.
All right. Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate that. Owen, up next at Oshkosh North?
Good evening. I also want to thank you all for the pleasure of presenting the Oshkosh North September Updates. Excited to get started. Okay, to kick the year off strong, our student council met before school started earlier in the week to host our annual staff welcome breakfast. So this happens every year, the day that the staff officially comes back. So we had some members of our executive board from student council along with some of our homecoming leaders. We all came early and put together a breakfast and drinks for our staff and welcomed them and told them a little bit about our upcoming events. The following day, we, student council along with our link crew and then the dance team and a few other organizations, hosted tables at our open house, welcoming freshmen and really trying to get them involved in the school right off the bat. This year, our super fans, which are the ones who we cheers at our sporting events, hosted Oshkosh North's first senior sunrise. So the day before school started, seniors were invited to go to Menominee Park at five forty-five a.m. for a sunrise. And we had a small group also cooking pancakes for everyone. So we actually had a really good turnout. I think we had almost fifty seniors come. And yeah, it was really impressive being led by students. Along with that, this past week, our student council really prides ourselves with our partnership with Verve. Verve is really helpful at our school. They help us with a lot of funding for our dances, spirit weeks, and sporting events. So over the past recent years, Verve has hosted a energy stations. So last Friday morning, Verve set up tables at each of our entrances, and we had some people welcoming the students with some free snacks. And that same exact day, our student council met for homecoming. So we had a huge turnout. People were interested in putting this together. So I believe our homecoming is the following week after Wes. Our dance will be on October eighth. The day before, we will be hosting our pep rally and then our tailgate and parade right before the football game. So we're really excited for homecoming this year. Our theme is going to be Hollywood premiere. So yeah, we have a lot of things planned for that week. Along with that, kind of the main social events right now are football games. So right up here is pictures from our most recent game, our most recent home game on Friday. Unfortunately, Oshkosh North lost, but it was great to see the turnout. So yeah. Along with the football team, we also had a performance from our dance team, which is starting out much smaller this year. So they are hosting additional tryouts to try to build the team bigger. And then our music department sung the Star Spangled Banner, so we had a lot of students come for that. And the arts are kind of starting off slower this year into a lot of bigger plans for into the school year. So as you can see, this summer, our music department announced our musical for this year, which will be Big Fish. So it's not a very well-known musical, so I hope you all come and see it. And then beyond football, we have a lot of other sports going on right now. So as you can see, volleyball has had a rough season this year, but that doesn't stop the crowds from coming and watching. Football has had a mix of wins and losses and a tie. Girls swim is also a much better team this year with a lot of new members. That goes for boys soccer as well. Our cross-country team is also much younger this year, so we are having a lot more, the younger grades getting involved. And everyone's improving. That goes for girls tennis and girls golf. So that's all I have for you tonight. Thank you.
Great. Thank you both for your reports. Appreciate it. All right. So we'll roll into the superintendent's good news report for tonight. First, we have Belle Phillips, staff member, started the year building meaning, with the intent of building meaningful connections. Team was excited to welcome Merrill eighth grader Joseph and his family, family-owned JD's Southern Apron to cater an amazing lunch for the entire staff. Staff were also surprised at the visit from the district's very own Brewing Futures Mobile Cafe. It's great to see our staff coming together to support students' families and our community, so that was a great event. We had Good Day Wisconsin, recently featured a few Carl Trager Elementary teachers spotlighting what they did to get ready for the school year and strategies to use to keep students feeling safe and welcome. Special thanks to our awesome teachers who embrace the early morning. When you do Good Day Wisconsin, it's never in the middle of the day, obviously. So our early morning on a non-contract day, so thank you all for participating in that. It's great to show off OASD. Kindergarten through eighth grade students and families and E Academy kicked off the school year by gathering for an in-person orientation. Families and students looking forward to another fantastic year of learning and growing together. Grateful to be able to offer this opportunity for a fully online school option. We're also very blessed to have incredibly talented staff members and leaders and love to see them in their own elements. In this case, it's Beth Shendel, who's the principal of the Oshkosh Early Learning. Recently presented an introduction to conscious discipline for all of our new four K through grade five staff members. Learning was inspiring, and we are grateful for this critical work to be done to support our youngest learners and appreciate Beth's continued leadership in that realm. The Oshkosh Rec Department is a proud partner of the Oshkosh North Girls Basketball Program to offer camps to girls in fourth through eighth grade. It's a great way for the girls to learn about the sport, and there's still time to be part of it. So if you'd like to be part of that, you can find more details at the Oshkosh Recreational Department website. But a few pictures from the action. Our district-wide summer jazz band performed at the Fox Jazz Fest in Menasha on Labor Day weekend. Music students from Oshkosh North and Oshkosh West learned and rehearsed in two weeks in August before opening this year's festival. OASD's summer jazz band is taught by Dan Singer, band director at Oshkosh West, and retired Webster Stanley Middle School band director Brad Curran. So thank you both for your dedication to that time. And in general, we had the first day of school, which is always the most exciting day. I said we have students coming, walking towards the building with smiles, and we have parents walking away from the building with smiles. So everybody's smiling that day. So it was a great day to celebrate it together. Again, one of my best, parts of my job is to be able to go out and experience that. So I had a great day over at Jefferson Elementary to start with. Popped around, and you could see, you could see the excitement expressed in many different ways across the system. So thanks to everybody for a great start to the school year. Also, just a friendly reminder that the district's COVID-nineteen plan for this school year, 2022-2023, can be found on the OASD website. Believe that by continuing to work together and acting responsibly, we can ensure the safe in-person learning student experiences for our students. Thank you to all the students, families, staff, and community members for your ongoing support and partnership in this endeavor. And finally, just some of the places that we've been, that I've been during this busy time as we get the school year kicked off. So thank you for, everybody contributing to, again, a great community start to our public schools this year. So that concludes my superintendent's good news report for tonight.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right, we move on to number three, district administrator supplemental reports. And first up, we have a referendum update.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. For our first report, Mr. Considine and myself would like to discuss major points on updating you with regard to referendum expenditures. The first item Nate is going to discuss will be the status of our elementary, new elementary school design.
Awesome. Thank you, Jim, and thank you for having me again. Over the past, oh, we're coming up on nine months now. There's been a core planning team assembled with district administration, principals, and other support staff for the new building. And that team has continued to meet biweekly as we started at a macro level, looking at big things such as the site and fun details like what kind of monitor and how is it going to be used in the classroom. So covering a broad range over the past nine months, and that will be wrapping up as we look towards the end of the calendar year. In addition to that, we've had specific meetings with staff that started in the late spring. These would be staff members that support and work in the specific classrooms in the buildings, such as example of the PE staff or the art teachers or things like that from across the different buildings that would make these specific spaces, you know, exactly what you guys need. We're catering, we're functioning, we're getting collective input from many people and coming up with a solution that is going to serve this building, this community for the next, you know, sixty to a hundred years. In addition to that, engineering meetings have been going on, ongoing since probably about May, and those continue on monthly. Those will continue on through the calendar year. Furniture selection meetings have been ongoing as we try to correspond the furniture design along with the building design and making sure that things are coordinated for when this project is finished, everything is moved in ready. And then lastly, we have had a few engagements with the city and specific to the site and how access points and other coordination pieces such as landscaping, other municipal requirements are being coordinated, and we are cooperating with municipal laws. Any questions on the elementary school?
Thank you. Thank you, Nate. There are two items I do want to highlight that were referendum expenditures that did occur this summer that were not directly related to the new elementary or Belle Phillips. One was the replacement of two high school roof sections, six, three actually, sixteen, seventeen, and twenty-three. Those were approved by facilities and finance in the early, late winter.
Those were approved by Facilities and Finance in the early, late winter, excuse me. And that has been completed this summer. The other acquisition was a generator for Oakwood, which we pre-purchased for the Secure Vestibule project, which will be bid out in December to occur in the summer of '23. So I just want to highlight those two purchases. The last item we had as part of the referendum update was really the Vell Phillips Middle School for our monthly update. I'm pleased to report that everything with Myron at Vell Phillips is on schedule and the project is moving along well. Work completed in the last 30 days. It's going to be more and more prevalent as you drive by. Continued installation of underground sanitary storm and electrical, that's, that's really coming to a conclusion now. A lot of our underground work is, is being completed as the building nears the far southern boundaries. Installation of concrete footings, foundation walls, and block installation is ongoing. Continuation of structural steel installation, which I think you can see from the road. Concrete has been poured at grade, so that's, that's your ground level concrete in building sections A, B, and C. Concrete topping, that's your second floor, has been poured on the second floor in area C. So installation of masonry block and load-bearing walls is ongoing. And the C mechanical penthouse, that's the one, it's the room on top of the second floor. That's going to house all of the mechanical equipment for ventilation, air conditioning, and heating. That has been built and the air handlers have been installed. They're inside of the mechanical space right now. So just to walk you through, top left is the mechanical room I just referenced. That's on top of building section C. That's going to ventilate the cafeteria and classrooms, food service, those areas. In the middle picture, you can see the picture of the air handlers that are within that space. That wall is now closed as you're looking through the walls of the outside. Upper right is a picture of the, I guess what would be second floor, yet to be completed, of section B as per your academic tower, C, excuse me, or B, I'm sorry, it's B. Your lower left is more structural steel, part of your Secure Vestibule. And on the bottom right is an outside look of what is becoming the Clear Story, which is the outside of all the windows that sit atop your cafeteria space. So you start seeing the windows being designed and the insulation going on the outside. Now to take you inside of the building, top left is second floor, section C, which is kind of the art area and special ed. You can see their framing walls with steel stud piping. To your top right is grade level, first floor, building A. You can see they're pouring concrete. Those are all open classroom areas right now with, with walls between the classrooms to be built yet. Same picture, bottom left is just another look of some different classroom and collab spaces, future collab spaces. And then your lower right is a second floor look, kind of down into the cafeteria. I'm looking in this particular picture across a hallway, which would become your library on the second floor and your administration on the first floor. So what is coming up over the next couple of weeks, over the next month really, is installation of roofing over areas C and D. The picture I just showed you is the cafeteria. Of course, C with the stud walls and D with the libraries. So we'll see the chase out there. Exterior spray foaming, window installation, the roughens will continue. Windows will be onsite shortly. You'll start to see windows being installed. Metal exterior panels will be added to the Clear Story, which was the, the picture I had shown you that sits atop the cafeteria with all the windows. You'll also see metal panels being installed on the mechanical penthouses as well. They will also complete the footings and foundation walls for the entire structure in the coming weeks. That includes the gymnasium. So by our next board meeting, all of our perimeter work for foundation walls will be on our page. Questions on the progress of Vell Phillips?
I do have a question, but it actually goes back to the elementary school part. I apologize. I just wanted to check something before I asked. So we currently have a 4K program at Webster Stanley Elementary School. Is that part of the plan for the new building? We may not know that yet. I don't know.
No, it's not. So we have three, I think, three classrooms right now. So though, we're, so we'll be in progress of kind of relocating. We don't have a specific spot for that yet, but that will, just because of the, the size and some of the limitations, just capacity-wise for that space, that those, those rooms will be relocated to another site.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep.
I have follow-up questions, but we can, this is a long project off, so we can save this conversation. Thanks.
Yep.
Ms. Wyman?
I just have a clarification. You said that some of the summer projects were approved by Facility and Finance. I'm assuming that the board also approved those.
The roofing project, correct.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Cons?
Yeah. Speaking of the new elementary school, when in the process, we had so much fun the last time naming a school. I'm just wondering, when does that come up for the next school when we start to go through that process for naming?
Yes.
Tomorrow.
Funny you say that.
Is it really?
Good time.
Tomorrow morning.
I didn't, I didn't look at the agenda for that.
Yeah, we'll begin the process tomorrow morning to just outline, basically outlining what process we want to use for that. So that'll, that'll begin in Facilities and Finance tomorrow morning. And then I assume will be a report out at our next board meeting about what, you know, what we, what Facilities and Finance would recommend and then creating that process.
Sounds exciting.
Eight o'clock tomorrow morning in this room.
Yep.
I have, I have one question and if you, can you go back to the air handlers? And that's the middle picture, I assume?
Correct.
All right. And I, I guess, I'm not, I'm not discounting that you guys, that you all don't know what you're doing. It's just that, that's a lot of, it's a lot of space to cover. And there's, there's, is there three air handlers there or is there two air handlers?
There's actually, I believe, there's four, I think.
Four, okay.
There's four in this specific space.
Got it.
This one for C.
And then in other spaces related to the building, there'll be more air handlers as well?
Correct.
Correct. All right.
Just for, just to help you maybe a touch here, this specific space will only support the middle section of the building. So art, cafeteria, admin, if you kind of remember as a core plan. The areas of classroom will be served by a separate penthouse. Then the areas of the gymnasium, music area, that southern portion of the building will be served by a separate mechanical space.
Okay. You answered my question. My, my concern was that that was going to cover everything and I was going to say we'd be grossly unprepared.
There is one chiller plant in the whole building.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next report, we have.
Jim, do we, we have, go ahead.
Oh, no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I don't normally provide to, I apologize.
I thought maybe there was, it got encapsulated in there.
Nope. I'm not sure Jim was staying.
I am staying. Our next report, I provided a written report for 3B. It was a, a follow-up to a workshop presentation that I had done prior to summertime, kind of exploring and sharing some of the maintenance projects that we had scheduled for the summer. I had provided that as a reference for your review. Are there any questions on the work that we performed as part of the summer's work?
No. Seeing none.
You were busy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was a big list.
A lot of projects. So thank you for coordinating all of that work.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
I think it's important to point out that these represent the role of the board in making sure that we are good stewards of the funding that we receive from whether it's state or federal or taxpayers to preserve these buildings so that they can best serve the education needs of our students. So I'm, I was, I was really amazed at the variety of projects that were undertaken this year to make sure that our buildings meet the needs of our students and staff. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next report is a student council engagement being led by Dr. Davis.
Yeah, thank you. So, you know, certainly want to welcome Owen and Tessa to, to the table tonight and we're looking forward to, to having them be part of our, part of our process. And one of the things President Peschall and I have been, have been working on, and it actually came to President Peschall from the State School Boards Association Convention last year in another district that provided some opportunities for student voice at board meetings. And so we've, are developing a process of our own based on a, a model of one of our peers to be able to provide more student voice and some direct leadership opportunities for Owen and Tessa to be able to hear from our student councils. And so I developed a report, which is basically outlines an opportunity for President Peschall and I to be able to meet with the student councils, to be able to get in feedback from our council members. We have a large council, we have large student councils, which is great. And then to be able to draw some themes from what we learned from what our students are interested and having some conversations about and actually calendar that as part of our board meetings moving forward as an agenda item that will work with Owen and Tessa to be able to help lead that conversation, to be able to have that student perspective at our meetings and, and have that probably starting in November by the time we get things organized through, through the end of their, their terms. So I think it's a good opportunity. You know, the reports tonight are great examples of, of, you know, some highlights at the building. So we'll continue with those, but we'll add in that student layer of some topics that we can provide some perspective on and be able to learn from our students some ways that, that we can improve. So, so just wanted to be able to highlight that, lift that up tonight. We'll be meeting with the councils in October and again, working on bringing some agenda items beginning in November. So with that, just take any, take any questions.
Seeing none.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Next, we are at other reports. This is an opportunity for any committee chairs to provide any reports from committees that have been, done any work in the last two weeks. I don't think there was any. I wasn't informed of any. So. Okay. So Dr. Herzog, did you have any reports from any of your, your workings that you do outside of?
Well, thank you. Actually, I do have a short one. I attended the Wisconsin Association of School Boards Board of Directors meeting on Friday and Saturday, which was in the Sun Prairie area. We had a chance to interact with State Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Jill Underley, who outlined several priorities with the Department of Public Instruction. Those include student mental health, student and staff mental health, early childhood education, and teacher retention. One of the topics that she also explored was whether or not there might be an opportunity for some flexibility in start dates for school districts. Currently, school districts cannot start, public school districts cannot start until September 1st of any given year, whereas private schools can choose whenever to start. Part of that discussion included the fact that there are many workers from foreign countries who come and support our tourism industry. And so that really doesn't impact our high school students coming back to school and our sports teams are starting in, in August. So those were some of the key points. We also talked about an advocacy role for the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, which will include working with our lawmakers to share with them the needs of our districts relative to special education funding, which we had talked about briefly earlier during Mr. Nihan's budget discussion. WASB has taken a stance that they would like to see reimbursement raised, perhaps in the vicinity of 50 to 60% so that that would impact every school district in the state of Wisconsin and every student because there would be more funds available for regular education as well as special education. We do have fall regional meetings coming up across the state. The one for this region is Thursday, October 6th. It will be in Nina. So if any of you are interested, that would be a, a good one to sign up for. And plans are well underway for the State Education Convention to be held in Madison, excuse me, in Milwaukee. I think it's the third week in January. It's around the 17th, 19th, somewhere in there. So I'm hoping that many of you will consider attending and getting, bringing back good ideas as, as those who attended last year and then prior years have done. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Peschall.
May I ask a follow-up?
Sure.
Sure. We got a letter saying that Barb Herzog is nominee for a WASB three-year term. And I, and it says someone should be coming from this school board to make the nomination. So I'm wondering how we handle that.
I will look into that and work on scheduling that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your report, Dr. Herzog.
Thank you, Mr. Peschall, for the opportunity.
All right. We have no one signed up for agenda-related public forum. We moved non-agenda public forum earlier. That brings us to the, the workshop and the workshop is the 2022-23 Budget Workshop Presentation being led by Mr. Nianz.
Good evening again. So really, following what we did last year, this workshop is really focused around the strategic plan and our goal too, which is to create an accessible and accurate budget to build trust and clearly communicate with stakeholders. So most of what you're going to see in the presentation are reports and materials that will be on the business webpage and try to make the budgeting process a little more easy to digest. The, the budgeting in schools isn't the easiest thing. There's a lot of moving parts. So trying to create a format where the community can come and get some resources that kinds of explains and kind of walks them through, one, how we get funded and then how budgets kind of get built from there. So this is, it kind of steps through how the revenue limit is created. Again, the revenue limit is how the state determines how much the, the district can not only tax for, but what our local and state revenue is set at. That really drives what our expenditures are going to be. Your expenditures aren't going to exceed your revenues. This is really kind of going through a graph to really explain for, for Oshkosh what our district is. So you have the resident membership in the left and then the per pupil amount. So $10,019 and then you get to add in a couple of one-time reoccurring exemptions until we get our total revenue limit authority. With all of this, again, some of these are going to be changing from now until October. But this is really the steps in how the revenue limit gets determined. And then at the bottom of the worksheet, these, the tax levy and then the property value gets us to a mill rate. So based on what we have here, if the numbers, these were the numbers that got set, the mill rate would be the 941, which is what we've been targeting. Again, all of these will end up getting posted on the website for, for the community.
I think your previous page was a great visual. I, I think visuals are easier for people to understand and I thought that was very good.
Yeah, trying to, and, and again, the, the thing I like about this one is the numbers that are being highlighted in, in the different parts are truly our numbers. They're, they're very specific to us. So it, it is a little somewhat easy to follow. And then hopefully people can kind of take that and extrapolate them to the next pages. So and also kind of breaking down in a different, different way than what our budget does, how our revenue limit not only gets calculated, but the different components. So in this one, you will see halfway down the page, you'll see the private school vouchers. That does come in in this because that is part of the revenue limit calculation. So you'll see right now. in in this, because that is part of the revenue limit calculation. So, you'll see right now, we've just got a tag, because we have no idea what the student count's going to be for that. We find that out October 15th. But that does get all then calculated in. So, revenue limit from year over year, you can see on the bottom how from '21-'22 until 2022-'23, the revenue limit reduced by just over $6 million. And then the rest of the graphs are really just different ways to show what that means to the community. So, in our budget, the equalization aid compared to local taxes, we've gone from 58 percent the prior two years to we're up to 62 percent of our revenue from the revenue limit formula is funded by the state in state aid. That's, to me, that's always a good thing. That minimizes what we have to tax taxpayers from. We're capturing more money from the state. This will be another one that the community would find value in. This truly is a breakdown of where our property values are, and it breaks them down by municipality, and then as a percentage of overall in the district. And then you can see on the very bottom, you've got the anticipated, what that breaks down, and this breaks it down to $100,000 property, a $200,000 property, and a $400,000 property, which is typically more than we do when we set the levy. Usually, we do it just based on the $100,000. So, when we look at the revenue limit calculation, this slide is showing anything highlighted in yellow are items that are more than likely going to change from today until we set the levy in October. So, the third Friday count happens Friday. So, we'll get our enrollment numbers solidified in the three-year rolling average on Friday. That with our summer school from this year get calculated in. So, that number's going to change, which is going to change that first line right below it in the hold harmless. That number will change as well. The other number we are pretty confident is going to change is that school voucher number. I doubt that we have the exact same number of kids and the exact same breakdown as we had last year. So, that number will change, which will then impact what our general fund number is going to be. So, at this time when we set our budget, there's still a lot of moving parts that have to get solidified before we can truly know where we're going to land. This is just another way to show, and another, again, it has the vouchers for expenses. It shows our open enrollment expense, where that is as well. So, a little different way of putting, reporting out expenditures and revenues.
When we look at the voucher expense, do we take into account the services that we provide for students who may not go to our schools?
No, that completely has to be absorbed by the district. So, when we provide different services for the private schools or transportation, we are required to do that.
Thinking about sports or arts or, you know, classes, math classes.
Nope, none of that gets factored in. The vouchers is truly, that dollar amount is truly what the enrollment number, dollar amount figure that the status set for the pupils that are participating in that. And again, it doesn't account for, that number isn't all-inclusive of what the private sector, the private schools get from the school district. We provide transportation for them. We provide services for some of their students. They're allowed to take classes here as well, so.
Fascinating.
Yes.
So, just to kind of clarify, the open enrollment versus the voucher numbers, open enrollment are Oshkosh area school students that have chosen to go to a different public school district?
Correct.
Okay. And then the voucher is Oshkosh area school district students choosing to go to, to use those funds to go to a private school?
Correct.
Okay.
And one of the big differences with the open enrollment, there is two dates. It's truly on the number of days you attend that other school. And we actually vet that out both districts. There's a vetting system where you see the students, and you can account for them and their addresses, and the days they're at the other school district. That all is a very transparent, a very open process in DPI. The voucher system, we have no idea what students they are and if they truly reside in our district. We have to take their word for it.
Just listening to the conversation, I have one or two questions on this. So, with the open enrollment students, do they need to apply every year for that program and verify their address within our system?
It does get vetted out every year. I'm not sure if they actually apply every year. I'd have to verify that.
Okay, I was just curious. And then on the voucher students, do they have to apply or resubmit every year and supply an address?
I'm honestly not sure how they do that. We're not allowed to know any of that information. That's something we've been pushing for Madison to at least give us the addresses, so we can verify that address resides within our district. It's truly the parents saying, this is the address we have, and this is the school district you're going to charge.
Okay, so.
We don't get to see any of that. We just get a number sent to us.
Okay, so if a student applied from Oshkosh last year to go to a voucher school, and they had an Oshkosh address, but they moved, say, over the summer to Winnicott County, if they don't report that to our district, does that mean that we're spending money on those students?
Yeah, I'm not sure how the state verifies those addresses. We're not allowed to locally.
Okay, thank you.
So, I would assume there is, I would hope that there is a vetting between the school district that's asking for the voucher, or the parent that's asking for the voucher, and someone at DPI to do that. But we locally are not provided any of that information.
Thank you.
These slides are just breakdowns of expenditures in different ways. And then, one thing we've started to do that I think is important for the community as well, is we're tagging the different strategic items, plan items, and goals, and putting where we are funding budget money for them. Obviously, these aren't all-inclusive items, but just trying to highlight some of the items we have within the different goals, and where those are put in the budget. So that, I mean, budget is truly being built and funded around our strategic plan.
That's awesome.
So, starting to put more definition and more clarity for the community and the board on what is being included and updated in that.
I really like that. I like attaching or connecting the places we're spending money towards, you know, the strategic plan. I think that brings a lot together, you know, so we can say we're trying to accomplish these objectives through the strategic plan, and this is how we're funding them, you know? And I think that that's a really good thing to, you know, help the public understand too, where money's going and why, and what we're doing with it to help make sure that our students have as many opportunities and good programming as possible, so.
Are there any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I have comments.
Okay.
So, I want to thank you for your guidance and your direction on creating a more transparent budget document and process. I see that this has been something that's kind of happened over my time that I've been on the council. But this is the year where I think I've seen the most steps forward in regards to that document and connecting it back to the strategic plan, and having an avenue to communicate how it works and how it's done on our website. I can't, I mean, it's extremely important, and it's just amazing that you've created a template to kind of put in the actual numbers that we can just put on our website, and people that, the public can go and access that information. All of you are great assets to the district in regards to providing information, but parents and taxpayers really enjoy when that information is there and accessible to them. And I think this budget really shows that commitment and that enhancement of that information to the public. So, it's amazing. You know, Ms. Wyman talked about how it's visually pleasing, and it's visually accepting. I think it's just a great contribution that you've done with the budget this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do have, excuse me, one question. On at least two of the slides, I believe you noted that the per pupil expenditure is $10,019. Is that accurate? Did I read that right?
It is. We, it typically would be $10,000.
Okay.
Would be where we would fall, they call it a ceiling, but it's actually a floor is more appropriate. You can be above the amount. You just, you can't be below it. But we did a transfer of service that, and we're going to do another transfer of service this year. So, that number then allows us to increase that revenue limit amount permanently. So, that's by doing the transfer of service. And what a transfer of service is, is when we have students that come from another municipality. In our case, it's a lot of the refugee families, where we have to increase resources and staffing to help them integrate into our community and into the school district. We're allowed to increase the revenue limit then by an amount that we ask for, that we can go through this process to get from DPI. So, we did that last year to about $190,000. So, that's where that $19 comes in. This year, it's just about $300,000 that we're asking for that limit to be increased again. We've got a significant group of families that have come in to the district, so we need to provide them adequate resources.
So, there are 421 public school districts in the state of Wisconsin. I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but could you broadly speaking, tell me where we are in terms of those 421 districts? Are we in the top quartile, or are we in the second quartile, third quartile, fourth quartile relative to other district spending?
We are definitely not in the top. That's part of, one of the things we would prefer or advocate for at the state level is a different funding formula. The way we do it currently, it isn't equitable. For instance, Green Lake, their revenue limit amount is north of $12,000 a student, and we're at the low $10,000 mark. There are districts up in the Door County north area that are over $20,000 a student on the revenue system, where there's districts at the $10,000. For our area, geographically, we're pretty much in line. Appleton's in the $10,250 range. I believe Nina's right around the same as us. Hortonville is $10,000. A lot of the valley is in that range, but it really does vary when you get around the state. M. Brooks over $12,000. Like I said, Green Lake's $12,000. There's, I wouldn't say we're in the very bottom, but we're certainly, the minimum threshold is 10. So, we're $10,019. So, we're certainly not at the very bottom, but we're also not anywhere close to the top.
Thank you. I think it helps to put that number in just some sort of perspective and what it looks like relative to other school districts. So, thank you.
Mr. Kearns?
I asked this question again, had I brought it up earlier, and we talked. I was, regarding the turf field that you had mentioned, is that, was that leftovers from last year's budget that's going to be allocated this year, or is that built into this budget here in front of us?
So, a little of both. The way Fund 46 works is, Fund 46 has to get funded by a transfer from Fund 10. The most effective way to do that is to shift that at the end of the year with whatever surplus you may have on that year. For us, for a district that's aided in our way, you want to do that at the end of the year, because then you capture more state aid. The more revenue we can get in, the better, and you get the revenue, the state aids based on expenses. So, this year, we transferred a little bit more than $6 million. So, we had a little bit more than a six, I believe our surplus is in that 6.5 million range. We put $6 million of that into Fund 46. That brought in an additional $850,000 in student, in state aid by doing that. And that then funds the project like the turf field. This year, we'll be able to fund it out of that fund rather than rely on our regular budget to come up with $2.5 million for that project. So, it's a little bit of both.
Regarding that, I have questions. And if I'm in the right place, I know we're going to talk about this, you know, when it comes to the contracts and stuff like that. But with the facilities plan that we've discussed at previous meetings, and it will come back with, are we confident that putting in the turf field with this budget now is in line with a long-term facilities plan, and not a better use of that dollars than somewhere else within the district? No?
Yes. So, one of the things that we've been really deliberate about, and again, we'll talk about it a little bit more when we get to the contract approval, is making sure that as we're looking at upgrading our facilities, improvements anywhere in the district, that we're not doing that shortsightedly to where we may have to rearrange a campus, for example, and be able to take that investment away. So, we've got a clear vision of where we want to go for all of our campuses, to make sure that, again, that we're not shortsighted with that. The turf example at West would be something we can outline, you know, when we get to that point. But that's, we've done that with a clear line of sight for the next 50 years, for example.
Mr. Wright?
I've been doing a lot of research, a little, some, on the next state budget. And it seems like the three biggest issues that are going to affect school district funding and where we're going to be at long-term for our budget, as we'll put this one together, but when the state approves their budget, right, it's a two-year cycle. So, per pupil funding, special education funding, and then the fact that we're characterized as a low-spend district, those things proportionally affect us and, you know, and will affect us in what we can do in a significant manner. You know, so out to, are we prepared, you know, for those different multiple scenarios that could come our way out of the state budget? You know what I mean? Like if we, because I've seen different analyses in different districts, where if we get $850 per pupil, then, you know, you're in a pretty good spot. But if the state gives $450 per pupil, then that's going to significantly eat away at our budget because of inflationary risks. You know, luckily, our health insurance has taken, and the move we made there has taken away a lot of our, those inflationary risks through healthcare costs. But I just want to, you know, get your thoughts on where we sit there, because those are kind of uncontrollable factors that, you know, that we have to look at though, because long-term, they're going to be a really big deal, you know?
So, if I can start, and then maybe Drew provides some feedback. So, I think, one, it's important to know that this budget is within this current biennium, you know, for the '22-23 school year. So, that biennium, I think, is the six- Um, so, that biennium, um, I think is the sixth year, six out of the last eight years includes freezes on our per pupil increases. So, that's what we're working with out of this budget, and this budget is sound, given the legislature's move in this last biennium. So, so, we're in good shape for, to be able to execute this budget, the commitments that we've made to staff, commitment that we've made to facilities as we move forward. So, I just want to make sure that we're set, that's what we're talking about with this budget here.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, the transition, you know, that we're looking forward to
That's coming, yeah.
is coming up, and what the next biennium looks like between the 2023 school year and the 2025 school year is what that biennium budget is. Tomorrow, the state superintendent will come out with what her priorities are.
Okay.
Uh, which includes some of the things that you've talked about. Um, and then, we'll spend the next, really, six months looking at what, how we can best position ourselves as we move into the future, uh, with multiple scenarios, because we, we've lived in a freeze environment lately. Um, so, we need to be prepared to live in a freeze environment moving forward. Now, there's some optimism that that may not happen, uh, but from my experience in, in 12 years as a superintendent, you know, having a, a freeze, a, yeah, we think we might get a little bit, and then a, yes, we get what the, uh, what the state superintendent is asking for. Like, having three different scenarios run through this next six months is going to be really important. And that'll be some of the work that Drew and I do, um, just making sure that we're, we're protected in whatever happens at the state legislature level. We'll certainly advocate for, for, you know, what we need and giving really contextual Oshkosh examples and how it affects our kids, uh, but we'll always be prepared as far as, as long as I'm superintendent and truce to business manager, we'll be prepared for those three avenues, um, and then be able to make adjustments as we, as we move forward. So, I don't know, Drew, if you had more to, to add to that?
No, you, really, that, that starts, um, as we show, kind of, in the budget hearing.
Yeah.
Um, in, in November, that's really going to start. We, we probably run upwards of 25 different scenarios.
Okay.
Um, on what can happen at the state locally, um, how we, things that are under our control. Um, we, we run a lot of different scenarios to try to make sure we're vetted out on where, where we are potentially going to land on that, so it, it's definitely part of the process.
Good, cool. Just to be clear too, if I'm, if I read correctly, I think, what, over the last 20 or so years, Wisconsin has been the third, uh, lowest in the bottom three of funding public education?
Yeah, I think.
Nationally?
Oh, yeah, over that.
Bottom three.
Correct, correct, so.
Thank you.
Certainly, some, some work to be done.
Thank you.
Any other? Thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Nihans or Dr. Davis? Did you have anything else that you wanted to provide?
Nope, that was it.
Thank you.
For the presentation.
Thank you very much.
All right, um, next, we are on the consent agenda. Um, for the consent agenda, the board has been furnished, uh, the background information on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and be voted on separately. So, I would entertain, um, I have to leave it. All right, uh, the board will consider approval of number one, personnel resolution, uh, a, regular appointments, temporary appointments, resignations, and salaries.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Wyman, seconded by Wright. Please call the roll.
Kearns?
Aye.
Heschel?
Aye.
Salaji?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Resolution carries.
All right, thank you. We will proceed to individually considered resolutions. Number two is the approval of the 2022, 2023 budget.
So moved.
Moved by Wyman.
Second.
Seconded by Wright. Uh, we are open for discussion of the, um, 2022, 2023 budget between the, the board. Is there any questions or discussion that board members would like to engage in?
I do have one question. Um, on the resolution, it notes, um, revenues of $185 million plus and expenditures of $229,000. As 200, I'm sorry, $229 million, so there's a discrepancy there. I'm just wondering how we're covering that difference.
What, what the, what you're referencing there is relates to, these are all funds. So, our Fund 40s get in included in that, and we already saw the revenues when the bonds hit, so we don't see revenue after that first one, so any year after that initial revenue hit, um, you're technically in a deficit budget for that year. So, that's where that difference is. It's not anything within our operational budget where we're going to go back to our general fund balance. That's outside of that.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clarification in case the listening audience is looking at those numbers and wondering, so, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Mr. Nihans, can you stay up?
Yep.
Did anyone else have any questions? No, I guess my, my question for the, for the public is because we, this is kind of step one of the budget process, Wright, uh, we will probably pass an amended budget or we'll be passing a levy at a later date, which will then affect all of this, and you've alluded to that throughout your multiple presentations today. So, what is the benefit of moving forward with the passage of this budget today?
We, we legally have to, because we short-term borrow, which is going to be a resolution that's coming up in, in a little while. Um, so, according to state law, for us to short-term borrow, we have to have a board-approved budget. So, um, that, with that timing of that has happened at different stages in Oshkosh. Um, for a while, it was happening in July. Um, for the last several years, it's happened in, in September. So, that's kind of affects the timing of when we do our budget. Um, there are districts that just do the annual meeting at the end of October after everything's certified, and they have the hearing and the budget adoption all at one time, and there's no, no need for, um, any revisions after that. Uh, for us, we do short-term borrow, uh, so, we, we need it for that purpose.
So, if we did short-term borrow, we wouldn't, we, we would probably follow a different model?
Correct, if we had no need to short-term borrow, then our timing for when we wanted to do the budget could be more late October.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or discussion? Mr. Kearns?
I would just like to say it's not a question. Um, I'm okay moving ahead with the budget as is. I do have questions and more conversation regarding the facilities and what that West turf field looks like, but we'll have that conversation at a later date, so, going forward, that's, that's kind of where I stand. Thank you.
Okay. Salaji, did you have a question? No, okay.
Cling to my ear.
Sorry. All right, any other discussion items related to the budget? Seeing none, please call the roll on the 2022, 23 budget.
Heschel?
Aye.
Salaji?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Kearns?
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Um, next, we move on to number three. Um, this is the resolution authorizing temporary borrowing in an amount of $8 million, uh, $8 million, an issuance of tax and revenue anticipation plus promissory notes and participation in the PMA levy and aid anticipation notes program.
So moved. Waiving the reading of the resolution.
Uh, moved by Herzog?
Second.
Seconded by Wright. All right, we are, um, open for discussion. Sorry, hand moved again, do you have questions?
No.
No, all right.
Maybe it's my no signal, I don't know.
All right. Uh, seeing no discussion or any questions related to this resolution, I would move forward with a roll call vote.
Salaji?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Kearns?
Aye.
Heschel?
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Any requests for future agenda items?
We, we voted on waiving the re.
Oh, we did, thank you.
We didn't vote on the actual resolution, I don't think.
You're right, so, thank you for that clarification, Dr. Herzog. Um, we have waived the reading of resolution number three. Um, is there any discussion related to resolution number three? Seeing none, please call the roll for the vote on resolution number three.
So, we have Herzog who, who made the motion to waive the reading, we have Wright who seconded.
Yep.
We don't have anyone who's done the, the motion.
Yes, correct.
I'll make a motion to, well.
Second.
We're good.
Do we have Wyman and Kearns?
Yes.
Wright?
Yeah.
Salaji? I'm sorry, Wyman?
Uh, aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Kearns?
Aye.
Heschel?
Aye.
Salaji?
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Thank you for providing clarification to that, uh, decision that we just made, everyone. All right, um, we are at request for future agenda items. Is there any items that we would like to see on the agenda in the future? Okay, seeing none, any announcements? No, I have announcement, I, it's just a general announcement. Um, in the last week, I've had the opportunity to go to, uh, Oshkosh North High School-based sporting events, and it's been great. You know, seeing the turf field, uh, being used, uh, throughout the week for practices and events, um, has been wonderful. Um, I got the op, I had the opportunity last night to go to a volleyball game at the Field House, and it was an eye-opening experience. I've never been to, like, an organized, uh, volleyball, you know, and it's, it was just amazing. Um, there was a student cheering section there, um, oh, and you talked about, about the volleyball games, and it was just absolutely amazing, like, I was not expecting a student cheering section at a volleyball game, and it was great, it was absolutely wonderful, so. Um, so, I've really enjoyed, and part of this is that my, my children go to, two of my kids go to North, and so I have the opportunity to go to a couple more sporting events related to North. Um, but it's been great. Um, and I played football when I was a kid, and so, it was really interesting to be in the, in the stands for a North football game as well, um, and seeing all the levels of community engagement that took place there in the student section, competing with the Kimberly student section as well. Uh, it was just great events all the way, all the way around, so. Um, so, I highly encourage, um, our community to go out and take part in, uh, not just our sporting events that are supporting kids, but all, all, um, all, all student-based events that, that, uh, that, you know, improve their lives. So, that's my only announcement. Anyone else? All right, seeing none. Um, would look for a motion to adjourn to executive session to, one, to deliberate or, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investment, investing of public funds, or the conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, parent one, parent C. A to discuss potential purchase of property.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Salaji, seconded by Wright. Please call the roll to adjourn to executive session.
Wyman?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Kearns?
Aye.
Heschel?
Aye.
Salaji?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned to executive session.
Thank you. Take about five minutes, and then we'll meet in the IS team room.
You sound like you missed all the legislative committee.